All right, good evening. Welcome to the June 5th, 2023 meeting of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to start by asking Reverend Commissioner BJ Gibson to give our invocation.
Would you bow your ears with me? Our God and our Creator, we thank you for this day. We thank you for blessing each of us and allowing us to come together during this time. We ask for your guidance and your direction as we shall discuss the business of this county. Lead us so that what we say and do will be done in a way that is fair and equitable for all the citizens of our community. We trust and believe in your will, and for it is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. All right, we move on to the approval of the agenda. There's one item that's being added in the consent agenda section, and I'll let our attorney explain that real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would just be to clarify the board at a prior session had approved the swap with the Laurinburg, with Maxton and Laurinburg on the airport tract and the conveyance by the county of a 3.22 acre tract to the what turns out to be now the two municipalities. In addition to that, we've determined that the county has a voice and conveyance is from the airport now, so in addition to that, you would be approving the conveyance from the airport to the county. So you will be approving both sides of that swap. It's just a swap of tracks out there.
Okay, so with that addition to the consent agenda, is anything, anybody got anything?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I could take it. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right on to our public forum. Do you want? Oh, I thought you had. This is our public forum. We have currently Mr. Samuda here to speak to us, and there's also a letter in your packet that he sent. And boy, don't ask me how far back it is. It's in there. But, Mr. Samuda, come on up into the there it is.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Kenneth Samuda. I live at 1318 Gaston Avenue here in Laurinburg, North Carolina. And I just want to take a moment to thank you all for allowing me to speak with you today. As Commissioner Ivy stated, there is an email with my business proposal, and I'm hoping all of you received it. But for the sake of time, I'm just gonna go over my purpose, mission, and vision. The name of our organization is Emmanuel Sons and Daughters of Promise. ESDP is a substance abuse and mental health provider. Our purpose is to ensure the safety and quality of life to the residents of Scotland County who struggle with substance abuse and mental health issues. The mission for ESDP will provide adult men and women a unique and different option in drug addiction treatment services. Through genuine compassion, empathy, and self-love, our holistic approach along with spiritually based principles and universal laws centered around pure, authentic love of self and others will provide a unique option in drug prevention intervention treatment. The vision. Emmanuel Sons and Daughters of Promise will afford every individual the opportunity to access and or attend exclusive recovery focused seminars, personal experienced motivational speakers, and a very, and various other special events. We will utilize a multi-dimensional approach to understanding how conscious and subconscious thinking affects every aspect of our lives. There's a new and exciting approach to addiction treatment as our motto states, J U I C E, which stands for join us in creating excitement. I've been on this journey now for 10 years. And on this journey, I've had a lot of ups and downs. A lot of promises broken, a lot of betrayal. But yet here I stand. We have a serious issue in Scotland County, and I'm here to address that issue. It was just recently brought to my attention, that's why it's not under proposal, that there has been an increase in syringes being purchased at pharmacies. Not by people who use insulin, but by people who are just buying these syringes by the box. That tells me that the problem is not getting any better. It's starting to increase. And we need to do something right away to address these issues. Emmanuel Sons and Daughters of Promise were prepared to address these issues. I come before you today asking for your assistance. It's been 10 years I've been on the menu, Commissioner Gibson, but I'm finally at the table. And I'm asking you, all of you, for your support and for your help. There's a building in East Laurinburg that I had the privilege of going in and taking pictures and sending to East Point and sending to Department of Health Service Regulations. They are ready to move forward. But again, I need your support and I need your help if I'm gonna obtain this building to provide the services that we want to provide. Now, a lot of people have said to me that I talk with so much passion about what I want to do. But I want you all to know that I didn't choose this. This thing chose me. All of you don't know this, but I was an addict for 30 years. I'm 17 years clean today, and I don't say that for applause. I say that because I have the experience needed to go and reach those who suffer with addiction. There's a terrible stigma attached to addiction. A lot of people who are suffering do not want to come to these treatment facilities, excuse me, for fear of being judged. But when they hear my story, they see hope. They see an opportunity. That's what we're gonna provide. We're going to uplift, encourage, and inspire those who struggle with addiction. Again, people say I'm passionate about this, but I want you to know today that passion it, 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 it just doesn't define how much this means to me. I've been doing this for 10 years, and I know I can help people. I've helped people in the past. And I keep hearing, when are you gonna open up facilities so you can see more people? I know that if I can get this building, and I'm hoping you all will agree, that I can start serving a minimum of 10 people. By this time next year, I project that we will help change the lives of at least 30 people. And that's just the beginning. To toot my own horn, I'm good at what I do. I've been doing it for so long. I know both sides of the spectrum. People trust me. They come to me. We need this in Scotland County, so I'm asking you for your help. The building, it's not in great shape, but that's okay. I don't see what it is. I see what it could be. It needs a roof. It needs to be cleaned out. It needs to be made a safe place for people to come and get what they need. A safe place where they can come and be themselves and not be judged, not be criticized, not be laughed at. There's a lot of talented young men and women out there whose talents are not being utilized with fear of ridicule, rejection. ESDP is a safe place for them to come and experience everything that God has intended them to be. But again, I need your help. I need your help. Give me six months. Six months to get this thing together. And then for the next six months, I'll come back here and I will tell you of the progress that we're making. I know I can do this. I just need your help. I can't do it by myself. I wish I could, but I need your help. So please, will you help me? Help others who are struggling with addiction.
Thank you, sir. And we do have a discussion about that later on on the agenda, so if you want to hang around for that.
Okay, I will.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chris Young, Scotland County Crime. There he is.
Thank you. Evening. My name is Captain Christian. I'm Police Captain Laurinburg Police Department. Tonight I'm coming before you representing Scotland Crime Stoppers, asking for your continued financial support as you did last year for the Crime Stoppers program. As you know, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and it goes through the community. It's run by the board. We have some board of directors that are here tonight. Your financial support that you've extended as well as the city of Laurinburg has helped to fund the rewards paid to Tipsters anonymously. It's also provided supplies to run the program. It also helped us create the website and run the P3 mobile app, which is easier for the public to submit tips. Instead of calling the phone line, they're able to go straight to the website or their mobile app and submit these tips. Quick stats, last year we received over 95 tips with 11 arrests with 13 cases cleared. Rewards was paid over $1,200. The biggest thing, we recovered four weapons. We recovered over $4,000 in stolen property. We recovered $500 in cash, over $9,000 drug seized, for a total of $14,026 for a year 22. So far this year, we have received 56 tips, so we've already exceeded over half of what we received in 2022. With two arrests, $1,100 paid in rewards, and $2,900 in property recovered. So I asked the Commissioners if you please continue to support financially Scotland Crime Stoppers program.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a question. Beth, how about, what did we do last year? I don't remember the amount. And didn't we make that commitment then to do it every year? I thought. I thought that was our commit, is it in?
Yes, we did that last year. I didn't change much of the budget.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, does anybody else want to speak? Take three minutes to speak. You don't have anybody else, right? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public forum and move on to the consent agenda with the addition that the county attorney had made earlier on it. We need a motion.
I think we did. You brought it up before.
So that's why I asked you if you said something. You said you did.
How do I say that?
Oh. All right, so we have.
And we will, but.
Adam, you have the, who made the motion and seconded.
Those two over there.
Okay, all right. So, well, that was approval of the agenda. That wasn't the consent agenda.
No, we never approved the agenda.
I don't know how we got there, but anyway. All right, so we got a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do we need to go back and do the agenda approval or?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, and we have a motion and a second approving the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm straight now. All right, so now we'll move on to DSS, Ms. April Snee.
Good evening. I'll just take a few minutes of your time. I have two things here. The first falls under SCATS. So we, the SCATS tab or Transportation Advisory Board has been talking about, as well as of us SCATS staff, of course, the possibility of hiring SCATS drivers without a CDL. Up until now, or until we decide to make the change, all our postings require a CDL and have historically. We're at a point now where our buses do not require a CDL license, and we are finding that recruitment for drivers, especially part-time drivers, is extremely hard to find someone who wants to work for an hourly rate and has a CDL. You know, that additional training that comes along with a CDL and what it takes to keep that CDL license. So we've been talking about that. The Transportation Advisory Board is aware. The DSS Board is aware, and we'd like to make a recommendation that we no longer require a CDL for employment. However, it can be preferred. We can base our hiring methodology on those that have a CDL. Basically, pay those higher than the minimum starting range because it would be something to our advantage if they had it. But we don't require it anymore, or we wouldn't require it anymore. We're finding other systems that are similar to our size don't buy buses that hold 16 or more passengers because there is not the need for those buses. And so the ones we have in our fleet now hold 15 passengers max, and that's the difference between a CDL and not.
14 plus the driver. 14 plus the driver.
Correct, 15.
All of them.
Did you take the seats out? Because they, they, they built for 16 and 17.
Well, you can purchase buses now that are built.
I mean, the SCATS buses we got, they're built for, I think, 17 or 18.
We have, we have six that are built for 15 and one left in the fleet that is built for 16. So we haven't modified any of the buses that were purchased. Just as we've replaced them over the years, we purposely purchased the smaller ones. We've also implemented more training for SCATS drivers, more on-the-road training, I guess you'd say. Of course, there's all the virtual learning that they have to do, but then there's the actual driving, right? You're driving a SCATS bus around town. And so we've increased the number of hours that people have to have before we just let them go and drive a SCATS bus with passengers on it.
They are, they do go through a training.
Yes, sir. So that's, that's what I'm recommending. I thought I'd bring that before the Commissioners because I don't think it's a decision to make lightly. I've discussed this with Attorney Johnston, and we've discussed hiring parameters for that. And what would we, what we would look at, of course, when looking at SCATS drivers, we already look at motor vehicle checks, criminal record checks, and look at those even more closely now if that person's not going to have a CDL when we bring them in.
What would you pay a SCATS driver that has a CDL more than one who does not?
Yes, we would bring them in at a higher rate.
Well, and it also might give some motivation to somebody who comes to work for you to go ahead and get it.
Right. What's, the SCATS is in a place now where we have, well, I shouldn't say we have enough people to operate every day. We don't. We don't because we have one part-time driver who's almost working full-time hours every week, every week. That's a problem. That's a problem for us as a county because at some point that county is gonna have to give that person benefits under personnel law. And so hiring part-time drivers is what we need. That's also the hardest position to feel, like I said, when you're requiring a CDL. They can go work somewhere else, full-time or for a greater salary with that. Yes, sir. We have, we really have a continuous posting for part-time drivers.
Any other questions or? It's up to you. Wanting to do that?
I think, I don't, you know, you know, them buses, it ain't no more than a pickup truck, no bigger than.
I'm not concerned with the CDL. I am concerned with the safety part, hiring someone who adhered to the laws of, you know, of the road and for me, we're driving in traffic.
Right. I think one thing we have now, we've always had cameras on our buses, but about a year ago, we upgraded the cameras. And as you can imagine, they're a whole different quality. One, they're a live view and they have sound. So I can sit in my office anytime, as well as the manager or the supervisor, and pull up a SCATS bus and see exactly what they're doing, what's going on on the exterior and in the perimeter of the bus. And so not that we can sit there and watch drivers all day, but it, we can. If we get a call or if we get a concern, we can pull it up and see what's really going on on that bus.
So, so your, your proposition taking regular Class C driver's license, people that holds a Class C driver's license and letting them drive the bus. So what, are you gonna give them any kind of training? Or do they, do they go through, how many hours of training or? What, what do you, what do you got in mind on that?
Yes, sir. So DOT requires certain training. There's, there's hours and hours of trainings that they do in the office. One, that's things like civil rights, administrative kind of things, but then there's also, of course, the road training where we can't just put you in a bus and say, you know, drive around the county. And so that comes down to, one, they sit with our experienced drivers, and they just sit and they ride with them for a few days. One, they're learning the routes. They're learning Scotland County, and they're seeing everything that's required to be a driver. It is more than getting on the bus. There's safety checks every morning. There's inspections every morning. There's how to use the tablet. So they, they shadow the drivers, and then our supervisor, when they get ready to go out on the road, she's sitting with them for at least two days riding around with them. Because I understand we all hold a large liability in that somebody's just driving citizens around the county in a bus.
None of the buses have air brakes, right?
No, sir.
I would make the motion that we allow them to.
I'll second it.
And use Class C drivers to operate SCATS.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I would just want to say just to drive and the driving I didn't have an issue, but having good judgment, had dealing with people. I once had a passion that they didn't know where they live. I'm the one that had to be, you know, clever enough to figure it out. So those kind of things happen. That's what I'm saying. Driving won't be her problem. And the other thing, you get training for that. You have to know your community and know how to that are sometimes ride our buses.
Having, having cameras in the buses helps, helps a lot.
Does the cameras look at the road and also at the driver also?
We have four cameras in each bus. So there's one on the, on the driver. There's one on the interior towards the passengers, and there's two on the exterior. One on the back.
Do y'all constantly monitor these cameras or do you just pull it every once in a while?
It's not constant. Of course, we'll pull it and download it if somebody calls with a concern. You know, if somebody says you ran over my mailbox, well, okay, you know, right? Let's see. And sometimes we do hit mailboxes, unfortunately, there. Nobody's perfect. And so other times, we'll just spot check and, you know, see what's going on on the bus.
But is it maintained anywhere, like for so long?
Yes, it is. It's a cloud-based system that we can also take and download it and save it forever as well. But it does, of course, loop over itself as most camera systems do.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. No other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we'll move on to Elder Abuse Prevention Proclamation.
The last thing I have, I feel is more exciting than SCATS cameras and buses. And I have our Adult Services Group with us here today. Four ladies run your entire Adult Protective Services for Scotland County. And so these ladies, three of these ladies are here. We have our supervisor, Kim McCray, Ms. Tanya Rayner, and Ms. Mary Bender, and they're, they're, they're kind at least raise your hand and give yourself some credit for being here. But I, I think Adult Services is probably one of the programs that some people don't even know Scotland County has. And then most people have no idea the range of services that, that these ladies do for elderly and disabled population. So this month is Elder Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. If you didn't get it today, you will. We're having a small ceremony on our grounds on June 14th at 10:00. So we invite you all to that, and I'm gonna read for these ladies the proclamation for Scotland County, if you don't mind. Okay. Whereas the United Nations has designated June 15th as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day to focus global attention on the problem of physical, emotional, and financial abuse of elders. And whereas research has shown that elder abuse neglect, violence, and exploitation crosses all social, economic, racial, and ethnic boundaries, is often committed by someone who provides care for the elderly person and is one of the biggest issues facing senior citizens around the world. And whereas World Health Organization data suggests that 4% to 6% of elderly people suffer from some form of abuse, a large percent of which goes unreported. And whereas combating, combating abuse of senior citizens and vulnerable adults will help older Americans to continue to live as independently as possible, improve their quality of life, and allow them to continue to contribute to Scotland County. And whereas, as a community, we should seek to understand the challenges and opportunities presented by an aging population and bring together senior citizens and their caregivers, local government, and the private sector to exchange ideas about how best to reduce incidents of violence towards elders and increase reports of such abuse. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed by the Scotland County Board of Commissioners, June 2023 is Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Scotland County, and urge all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, businesses to acknowledge the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue, to learn how to report abuse and to raise awareness and take a stand against elder abuse neglect and exploitation. Proclaim this fifth day of June 2023.
Just a clarification, so that day is June 15th, right? On according to the proclamation. But the invitation's for the 14th, so.
The, our, our event is on the 14th.
Okay.
Yes, June 15th, you're right, they're one day off, but our, our program's on the 14th.
Anybody?
I would move that we adopt the proclamation and order that it be issued.
All right, motion and a second. Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. All right, moving right along, EMS, Robert Sampson and Matthew Locklear. Just gonna be one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come before you. Last month, I did a presentation before you where I was making a proposal to do a shift change from our current 2448 work schedule to our proposal to switch to a 2472. I'm here tonight to request, after we've done some looking, that we need an FTE Position Assistant Shift Supervisor's position. This position is needed in order for us to be able to move forward with the, the schedule of going to a 2472. The good thing about this proposal is we're not asking for any money. We've been able to go back and look through our budgets, and with the variance in salary that we've been able to discover that our current budget will be able to handle this, the addition of this position without actually requesting any additional funds to go towards salary. So as a result of this, we've asked our finance director to add this into her budget summary that she'll be presenting to you this evening of a consideration for the upcoming fiscal year. So with that, I'll pause for any questions that you may have.
This is, and this is the same about the presentation where you made switching to the 12 hour.
That is, the 2472, that is correct, sir. Yes.
I think our last meeting, whatever day that was, yeah. Okay, now, do we need to make a motion on that? Do we need? We do need to, okay.
I have a motion that we put a reclassification of this position.
Okay, motion and a second. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
I think, I think it's a reclassification of one position and the addition.
Yeah, for the, for the FT, yes.
Okay, so we all, any opposed? Okay.
Thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hobbs, Water Districts.
Good evening.
Hello.
As of May 31st, Water District 1 brought in revenues of $601,535. We expensed $524,108. We're showing a revenue over expenses of $77,427. And our ending cash as of May 31st is 1.4 million. Water District 2 brought in revenues of 1.1 million. We've expensed out $970,000. Got revenue over expenses of $221,000. And cash on hand at the end of May was 1.6 million.
Okay. That is.
Just the overview, that's pretty much all that's taking place in the Water Districts, and in your packet, you should have the budget, the actual comparisons. The budget for Water District 1 was $680,000. And the budget for Water District 2, 1.7 million.
That's the upcoming budget or is that?
That is the current budget.
Current budget.
Yes, sir.
So for the lack of a better word, I'm gonna say our I don't think we officially have a fund balance, but it's pretty much what the cash ending May 31st is. All right, anybody else have anything? No questions, nothing. Man, y'all are easy tonight. Makes a move. Okay, don't go anywhere. Now comes the fun part. And we'll, we're gonna start our discussion of the 2023-24 budget. Before we start any discussion on that, should we do our public hearing first? Well, that's, that's why I'm saying. Okay. We'll let you do the presentation, then we'll do the public hearing.
The bu, the budget recommendation for the general fund is 53,546,672. The property tax remains unchanged at 99 cents per 100 valuation of properties listed for taxes as of January 1st of 2023. The assessed valuation is in excess of 2.4 billion. And revaluation preparation will begin in January of 2024. The primary changes in the upcoming fiscal year 2324 budget. For personnel, we're showing 1.25% progression steps for employees that meet the eligibility requirements. We're asking for two bonus admin days in lieu of a cost of living adjustment. We are allocating ARPA funds for sheriff and jail salaries for part of the fiscal year. We are asking for two sheriff SRO positions contingent upon the school's contract. And we are looking at freezing hiring of two positions in the tax department. One position in the public safety department at the EOC. And the custodial supervisor position in public buildings. With the construction project with IE Johnson, we are looking at adding two parks and rec positions for the gym. And as Robert stated with EMS, we are looking at adding the supervisor position for EMS and the assistant shift supervisor position for EMS. As far as operational expenses, everything pretty much remained flat compared to fiscal year 23. We are seeing increases in food and medical costs for the jail. Our capital projects, we're looking at 10 vehicles for the sheriff's department. Three vehicles for health and DSS. That's combined, not individual. The mobile trailer for the rescue squad. Furniture and fixtures for the library. And those two capital projects will be utilizing the ARPA funds. The generator for the jail and a walk-in cooler and freezer for the jail. And there are funds being transferred in from the canteen fund to cover these expenses for the generator and the freezer. And we're also looking at adding a bus for scats and part of that is, or the majority of that is paid for by the Department of Transportation. In education expenses, there were no changes for the school system. And Richmond Community College asked for approximately 50,000 in addition to what we currently pay.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I will say one thing on that. And, and she talked about a little bit about the medical costs for the jail. And in my role over the last couple of weeks, I had to approve a 186,000 for one inmate. The medical costs, don't have a choice in our custody and, and can't get him out, huh? He, he won't take a deal and he won't, and, and so, but that was 182,000 unplanned that we had to pay very, very recently anyway. I don't know if we paid it yet, but it's going to be paid. So.
Mr. Chair, could you speak to the 10 vehicles for the sheriff's department? We do five, but this year we're doing, did we buy any last year?
We bought five last year, but now this year they've had the addition of the personnel. And, and so that's the reason for the five, for the 10 this year, but that's not going to be a permanent. That's the plan, right?
That, that's right. We're going back to the five in fiscal year 25.
Right, right.
I don't, do you want me to go into the water districts and the landfill? Or do you want more discussion on the general fund?
One, one, one word about COLA and how we're having that for today.
And.
We discussed that earlier.
We did not. After our last budget session, I had concern about cost of living adjustment for staff. And of course I reached out to Chair and, and he talked with Beth. And so I wanted to kind of elaborate on that rather than just moving forward.
All right. Well, there was, there was, you got in, in that salary study that we just did in the, and especially the last increase. You know, it was supposed to originally be a three-stage and we did it in two stages. So in the last year, we've increased just salary steps by a million two, I think is the number for that, that we've done. And some of those is recent as March when we, we did the last ones. So we were, number one, it was a, a budget issue trying to look at the cost of living, but we didn't want to do nothing. So we came up with two extra leave days that will, won't count, cost us anymore, but yet it's a benefit for, for them to be able to get something. It doesn't change the 1.25% progressives for employees that are, that are coming up. That's still in the budget. But just a, an additional cost of living over and above what we just did on the salary study steps, which was quite a lot. So. Is where that is.
So, so explain the two administrative days. What, what are they?
Two days, two days off.
Additional sick leave, additional vacation days.
No, it's, it's admin days. Administrative leave. Won't be counted as vacation or sick time. It's just.
And they get paid for them two days off.
Right. The extra two, yeah. Whatever that time. And it carries over, correct?
It, it, it carries over and it does not get paid out if the employee leaves.
When, so we're not going to look for any type of COLA for this particular year?
No. Because we've pretty much done it in the, in the salary study.
Yeah, the salary study was, you know, was.
Yeah, but I heard from both sides of the fence on that too, Bo. I heard folks say, I got very little. I heard folks say, you know.
Yeah. And I guess that's my only concern. And Ms. Snead and Ms. Dever, I know have employees who were negatively affected by the salary study. And, and so for those people who didn't get a bump and now they don't get a cost of living.
But two days off, the only benefit to them is they doing something else on the side, like pressure washing, cutting grass.
Well, I, you know. This is your board. So you made the call, but I mean, that, that was.
I would like, I would like.
There was 18 people in the county that did not get anything out of the salary study bump. And, and everybody else in the county got it. So the 18 folks that didn't get in, involved in that were already within a range, a higher range of the salary range for those positions.
But no salaries were reduced as a result.
Right. None, none were reduced. Yeah. But. A, a 2%, was it 300?
One, 1% is approximately $250,000.
I refer to Ms. Dever and Ms. Snead because they have, I know, received emails from staff members with concerns, of course myself and Mrs. Susan have been in those emails. Do you all have any, any input? On behalf of your staff who had those concerns?
I mean, I think it, it is exactly what you said. They're concerned because they weren't impacted anyway by the salary study. I think I presented at one of our DSS board meetings. Matter of fact, the salary study hurt my social work services. The hardest, the hardest service in the building to keep people in with a turnover over rate of 50%. And now I have to hire them at a lower salary than before the salary study. And that is fact. And so it has hurt my recruitment efforts. And, and so then the people that are already there, of course, don't understand why they didn't get anything out of the salary study. We all understand the methodology, but that's very hard to explain to somebody when they're looking at somebody sitting beside them who paid a huge raise out of the salary study. Again, we understand the methodology, but that's hard to look at somebody and explain to that. And then, and then on top of that, if we say, and you're not going to get a cost of living this year either anyway. People appreciate time off, but people appreciate a cost of living more. I mean, just.
I agree with April. I've had some of the same concerns with my staff. After the salary study, I had numerous grievances filed, my staff filed because their salary didn't move. They didn't understand why. You know, we understand, but they don't understand why it didn't. And that hurts when we're trying to retain the staff because they're going out trying to recruit as well. They feel like the ones that did get a little bump, it brought in where everybody, all the other counties are paying them. And then now they're not going to get a salary increase. So at the time, it's going to put those counties right back ahead of their salary. So.
Can I just speak to that? If you recall the.
How about if y'all are going to speak, come up so folks watching can, can hear it. Cause I know they can't hear it when you're.
And we had anticipated that one sector of positions with Scotland County would not be happy with this study because they were given a 10% increase months before the salary study was completed. So when the actual study came in and they were properly classified, in, in fact, the salary study said they were one grade above where the consensus was with the benchmark counties. So their salaries did not decrease, but they got the 10% increase before the other employees did when the salary study was being put into effect. So I just wanted that point pointed out as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know this is not going to go over well, but I have to say it. The study wasn't done for us to give folk a raise, but we knew many of our group of employees were paid less than the region on average. We knew that. And so the study showed us where we worked. So fortunately, we had a group of people in Scotland County that was paying equal to the region. That's where these people fall in. And of course, being an employee, if, if my neighbor get a raise, I want to get a raise. But the study was done not so much for a raise, but for us to move the job classification where it should be put in much more than we could there to get in line with. That's what we are trying to do. And I guess there's no perfect way to do it. But for the 18 people that did not get an increase, I would like to know that, well, you did because we gave you 10% before the study. And when the study was done, you, you would make the same money if you went to another, the same job in another county around us. That's, that's what happened. And so I wish we could give it, you know, let everybody raise. And, and brother, my, my commissioner, Congressman, this is a miracle. So I know as, as politicians say, let me be clear. So let me be clear. I know we didn't satisfy everybody, but it was as fair as we knew how to do it.
Well. I don't know the 18. Or what?
Not all the 18 were in that 10%.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me finish. I got you. I don't know the 18. I don't know the facts. I don't know how many did or didn't. Whether they were included in the case study to increase their salaries or not, I think we should at least consider our employees every year, whether we are able to do anything or not, but carefully look at it. I can appreciate these folks. You know, they, they do have increases in food and medical and kids in college. And we should be able to show them that we're going to try. Whether we're able to get there or not, at least show them that we're going to try to meet them at some point. Try to, you know, give them a raise if possible. Whether we can or not, we don't know, but at least look at trying to, to, to give them something, some type of COLA.
I think you're right. I think we need to look at it. And just the 18, the 18 that, that, that didn't get a raise, it don't hurt to take a look. Just, just take a look to see. But that's what I'm saying. The, the 18 that didn't get a raise, is it just 18? Is that all? Is it just 18? Or is that your, just your department?
No, that was.
That's beyond that.
That's, that's everybody. Okay. Okay. I think it's worth just taking a look. You know, just take a look at it.
And, and I get what in, what Commissioner Williams is saying. We have to keep in mind though, that we did this, we did phase two and three at the same time.
And, and I agree with that.
Had we not done that, then the money would have definitely been there to.
But that was, that was a big, that was a big package to look at at one time too.
Oh, I agree.
So we could have overlooked something. So, so I say let's look at it.
And, and I bring the conversation up tonight because as a board, we never even had a conversation about COLA. We never, in all of our budget sessions, we never even discussed it. And I think to not have the conversation says that we're not even looking at, at it as a possibility.
I thought that what the job study was.
I'm talking about COLA in our annual budget. We didn't look at that. We never discussed it.
I think, I think it was only mentioned that there was nothing planned yet.
Yeah. From, from what I looked at, when I looked at the package, I, I thought it was, looked pretty fair. But now it was a big package. That's the reason I'm willing to look at it again. Yes.
I want to say something about the administrative days. We act like that's not going to cost us anything, but I don't think that's accurate. I think when you, when you give people extra days off, there's still, that work's got to be done by somebody. And it may mean people being called in. I would assume you gave it two, two days and additional leave to the sheriff's department. You don't have deputies on there. They're going to call somebody else in and your overtime goes up. So I'm, I'm not sure about the, you know, the wisdom of adding administrative days as.
In the.
A bonus.
Well, that's, that's 11,000 man hours of leave time.
And I've, I've, I've been a supervisor in places where, when, when folks take time off. And, and there's nothing wrong with this. You know, supervisors have to come in and fill in those gaps. And a lot of times your supervisors have more administrative leave than they ever get to take. So I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just, I think that's a, that's, that's, that's something we need to think about before we do. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know that I'm in favor of that.
And, and I agree with you two. I, I agree with that. But I, but also I think we need to, we owe it to ourselves just to look at it.
I don't disagree with that at all. I'm just not sure why, how we do that with the time we've got left in order to approve the budget. And that's a question for somebody else to.
I, well, you know, if, 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 I think if you're going to do it or, or attempt to do it, we need to give Beth instruction on, here's what we're looking at percentage wise, what it's going to cost. But the big factor is where are you going to get it?
Yeah.
Where are you going to get the money from? Um, that, that's the big one. So if, if 1% is 250,000 ish dollars, you can easy math if you go up from there, but um, I, I just say keep that in mind that we've got to figure out where we're going to get the money from. So.
You keep the tax rate at 99.
We keep the tax rate at 99 because, um, yeah, even if you raise the tax rate and you did the 1%, it would about equal out. So it would about wash out.
And if you, if you looked at the 18 people and you, if you've got 18 people, you may have another set of people who got very little. So I don't, I don't know how you stop at the 18 people. But if you've got, and if, but if you look at the individual cases and they did get an adjustment, because I know we've made some adjustments in the last couple of years with law enforcement and social workers and, and, and I don't know who all. And those were appropriately made. And that meant when the salary study was completed and those raises were enacted, some of those people had already been, received that compensation. So I'm not sure that it's, that even though they didn't get a, a cost of living increase, they may have already gotten the increase that they would have gotten with everybody else. So the number of people that we feel have been shortchanged in this, I think need to be looked at. I'm not sure who has the, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm looking at Susan and, and, and I'm sure there are people outside of health and social services who follow in that category. But, but if somebody would take, take a look.
She, she has, I had asked that earlier in last week of, I mean, you didn't, weren't affected by that. And that's where the 18 number came up with.
Mr. Chairman? Then discuss this all night, then we need to just have a call meeting to revisit this and go down as quick as we can. Then we need to just have a call meeting to revisit this and go down as quick as we can.
Yeah.
Because. To the bed, see what, see if there's anything we can do to stay within our 99% tax rate. So let's decide.
I agree with that.
I can agree.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Do you got, do you want her to go through these water district budgets and?
We can do it at the end.
We'll do it when we recess.
We'll recess.
We'll decide. We'll decide. There are other reports in there with the landfill, the water districts, et cetera, in there. Pretty much self explanatory. I don't think there's anything in there that's over and above the normal or outrageous. There's no large capital requests in there for such like the landfill equipment, right?
Right. The capital for it was a new scale house and then looking at replacing the actual scales. Uh, the other thing is looking at, uh, there are a few fee structure changes. Um, I don't know if we need to address those. Looking at the water district, the city is proposing a 25% increase on their water sales, which affects us. So I've incorporated that. Our, our new rates are listed in the, in the chart. Uh, zero to 2,000 gallons is $39.81. And as you move up to 5,000 gallons, um, it's $39.81 plus $574 for every 1,000 gallons used. And then over 5,000 gallons is 5, uh, $57.03 plus the 574 for anything used over 5,000. And there were a few capital dollars appropriated for the water expansion on Turnpike Road and the upgrades at the Wagerum wastewater treatment plant.
And I was going to talk about that Wagerum thing, but I'll do that separately.
And the landfill, uh, pretty much everything remains the same, other than what I just mentioned with capital expenditures. And we are looking at raising the tip fees for the city of Lornburg. Uh, we kind of set incremental amounts over the last couple of years. And we're at a point where we've got to raise their rates in order to keep our costs in line with what we're paying to transfer the, the trash out. And then we're looking at raising the inert debris to $30 per ton.
Is part of what we're doing approving the fee schedule?
Yes.
Um, and if, if, I'd like to ask a question about one of the fees and it probably can be answered better by, by Brian than anyone else. Brian, at our last meeting, we had conversations about the fees is, are the changes that we talked about addressed in this fee schedule?
Um, I did send information over to Jason regarding the fees that we discussed. I'm not sure.
It's in the pack.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking at the proposed parks and.
He's going to make a copy for you real quick.
I think I've got.
Yeah, I know you guys mentioned, uh, taking, removing the fees for park rentals, um, in the last meeting. And I just followed up, I sent a follow up email to Jason and just kind of reiterate, reiterated from my perspective. I feel like it was important to have some type of fee structure within our park setting. You know, I, I understand your stance. Anyone can obviously use the parks free of, of, of charge. But in terms of an organized activity, I feel like it was important to continue that trend. Uh, you know, there's no one in surrounding counties or even counties that I'm aware of that, that just opens their parks up, um, for organized events. There's some type of structure set around a specific rental or reservation. But you know, if that's what you, if that's what the board desires, then you know, we can make that adjustment.
Well, it just looked like it was, um, different than what we had talked about. And if it's, if you've gone back to the way it had been, and that's your recommendation, I think we can look at that and make whatever decision we want to make. But I just, I was trying to make sure that I was not reading something incorrectly.
Yeah, so, so my recommendation for the, the parks was to do a flat rate of $100 per day, per park. Uh, and again, that just goes back to the significant improvements that we've made over our parks, um, here in the county in the past three to four years. Um, you know, Scotland Place, uh, we, we, we.
Let me clear that, that you're not talking about renting the park, you're talking about reserving a shelter.
Reserving a shelter, um, which gives you usage of the park for the entire day. Now, that doesn't mean that a family can't go into the park and, and use the amenities there. You know, that, that, that's still able, they're still able to do that. That just means they have a designated area for a designated party with access to restrooms for that particular day.
And if they want to do that in advance, they need to pay that fee, but that reserves for them for that event.
That's correct.
I don't have a problem.
Do I need to go over the Scotland Place? Okay.
Not unless anybody else has a question.
Yeah.
Y'all have anything?
I'm, I'm not a fan of it, but I'm not going to argue it. But I mean, I'm, I'm not a fan of it. I mean, and that is because as a citizen, I already pay for that park. And so if I want to have a event there, now I've got to go back and pay again. And also as I should run in the last meeting, I know of instances where there are people who go out and don't pay, you know? So to create it, it's kind of, I mean, sometimes it is a headache.
Well, you're, you're not saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that you can't just go out there and have it. But it's kind of, you're up in the dark whether it's going to be open or not without paying the fee.
Right. Whoever, uh, reserves the facility has priority at that park. Now, there are instances where we waive fees, you know? If there's events or if it's, it's a nonprofit, we try to work with different organizations, not for that fee to be a hindrance on what they want to proceed with. So, you know, there's times where we waive fees in house, depending on the event, depending on the organization that we're working with. Obviously nonprofits, we take that into consideration, uh, if they're doing a community event. So, you know, there's times and ways that we work around fees, you know? We just, that's just in place for someone that's either coming from out of town or wants to have an organized party at a specific park. For them to be able to pay that fee and say, okay, I know, I'm comfortable with the fact that we're going to show up and this is going to be ours for the day.
I can say this, I've never had a phone call or complaint in my years of commission. I don't listen to about this kind of, I've never had one. So I, I think. Sleep, that's presented. Like I said, in 20 years, I've never had a phone call or complaint.
My memory may be bad, but didn't we make a motion on this last, last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we voted on that.
You, you guys asked me to come back to this meeting and, and, and present the information. Because there was a concern about fees for the shelters.
Yeah, we didn't vote. Okay. Anybody else got any questions, Brian?
Thank you.
Sir.
Oh, Brian, don't forget, tell about the reveal, reveal.
Yeah, this Friday, uh, 6:00 PM out at Scotland Yard. You know, we want to remind you as commissioners and community members to come out. We're doing a reveal party for the Community Build, September the 18th through 24th. Uh, huge project for the community. We have it all over social media. We are going to put a sign up out at Scotland Yard in the next few weeks that lets people, uh, scan a bar, a QR code to sign up as volunteers. But, you know, we'd love to see you guys out there this Friday at 6 o'clock. Free food, free pizza.
Nope. I helped build the last.
So you know what to do then?
I'll be able to give advice this time.
Good supervisor.
That's great. Um, I, I will not be there Friday because graduation is at the same time. I say that to say that there may be a lot of people who can't be there because of that, but don't let that discourage you. But I would ask that when you have the event, that you make sure you publicly say that once the new park is put in place, we're not going to be charging admissions. I've been told by about eight grandmothers, I can't believe they're going to tear down Dragon Park, put up a new one, and then we got to pay to go to it.
Gotcha. Yeah, we'll clarify that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Beth. Covered solid waste. The other fees would be building permits. I think I'm, I'm not jumping ahead here too far. So going to, are you?
That, okay, that was all I had as far as fees. I get, I think you guys have the fee schedules.
There's other fee schedules.
Yep, so the only other thing I had was just the other funds that we have that are non-major funds. And, uh, just that they're presented there for the 911 Fund, Fire Districts Revaluation, the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, our Canteen Fund, our Inmate Fund, our DSS Trust Fund, Concealed Carry Weapon Fund, Tourism Development Authority, and the 4H Program. And the only capital items listed in, and those are for the 911 Fund, and that's for the equipment upgrades. And, uh, six fire trucks. And then the Canteen Fund I mentioned earlier, that we would be transferring funds to cover the generator and the walk-in cooler and freezer.
So those fire trucks aren't going to be this year? I know that was something we voted on last year, but.
They, they are in the process of being built is my understanding, but we have not received them.
Supposed to be delivered by now or shortly by now, anyway.
I can speak on that, sir. Um, and then you are exactly right. Um, unfortunately, there became a chassis shortage again. So the first round of chassis was supposed to be delivered to the vendor next month in July.
So really, this is a carryover.
Pretty much.
Okay. And that's coming from the fire fund anyways.
Correct.
Fire district fund. Um, okay. Anybody else got any questions with that? Budget wise?
I do have a question as far as the cola that I'm supposed to go back and look to see if I can find. Is there a percentage that we are looking at?
Okay, I, I, honestly, if you can, anywhere from 1% to 3%, that would be mine. I don't speak for the whole board.
And, and.
Did what we did this in this past.
Uh, for fiscal year '23, we did 4%, which I think was more than generous. And I, I, and I can say, I, I've really looked for this 1%. And it, unless we cut more operational, I'm not sure where we're going to find it.
At least take it out of fund balance, right?
Well, I would not recommend taking out a fund balance for salaries because that is an ongoing cost.
Thank you. They're going to be a lot. I, so.
Folks, I think the buck stops, Mr. Commissioner. I still say we should meet and we make the recommendation, not ask someone to make it to us. We need to look at it.
She just needs to be prepared with numbers.
I, I said, do what Duke said and let us look at it.
Yeah.
I agree with you, let her go back and give us the numbers and we look at it and figure it out.
Okay, if you can get the number, we will not have met. We're going to meet.
So when we come back to meet, she'll present the numbers that she's gone back. Well, we'll set that at the end, so we'll set that, yeah. That's right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know what it is we're asking you to do?
Yes.
You do. Okay.
Wave that magic wand.
Thank you, Miss Hobbs.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so now we're going to need to open our public forum or public hearing for the budget, um, which we will do now. If anyone wants to speak on the budget, uh, this would be your time now to, during our public hearing. Anybody? All right, without seeing anybody, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, oh, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. I rescind that closure.
Good evening. I just have a couple of. My name's Dorothy Tyson. I'm a citizen of Scotland County. One question, was this budget available for the public to see? It's kind of hard to have a hearing the same night that you're having the budget approval. And question two is the fact that you're having her to go back and look and see if she can find money for COA between the, between maybe 1 and 3%, which means it's going to change all your balances in your other, because you got to figure out where it's coming from. Is that fair for the citizens to accept it at this time when you still not finished with what you have to do? Thank you.
It's a fair point. I mean, that's a fair point, but to, to that end, I think what the bottom line will be is that, that total amount for the budget of, and now I've done flip through it and don't know where it is, 50. Yeah. 53 million, 546, 672 will be the final. No, that's the revenue number.
That's the total expense.
Right there. Yeah, 50, 53, 546, 672 will be the end number.
Regardless.
Regardless. But we'll have to pull it from other or what, where, or, or we'll have to increase the tax rate.
But, but the most important thing is we're looking at.
Right, right.
We're not ignoring the employees.
Yeah.
When, I was in the doctor's office when we, we had this budget meeting, but was not the public aware when we, when we had this meeting, Ms. Tyson? It was a regular, it was a public sized meeting.
It was.
And, and there's.
During the day, a lot of your citizens who work and you started at 9:00 or 10:00.
Yeah, but it was online where you could look at it later that day.
If you work and you don't have.
You could look at it later that day, though. Well, and there's, there's, there's a copy at the, all you have to do is go to the front desk at the county office and ask, and you get a copy of it.
Is there, is there one at the library?
I don't think, I think.
It was not.
It wasn't done in secret. It was.
I didn't say it was done in secret. I'm just asking.
I'm just saying, when this meeting was held to discuss this, these figures, it was open to the public and it had been publicized.
I understand.
Yeah, and there, there was a publication done in the local paper about the, about the, the budget.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one good thing is we're not voting on it tonight.
That's right.
So the public still has.
They still have time to look at it.
To look at it, review it and, and bring any concerns that they have to.
That's right.
So when you have another public hearing at the next, I'm just asking.
No, we'll only have one public hearing. Couple reasons, we're up against the timeline by state law, we have to get it passed. And, um, we would have to do another 10 day for a public hearing. And, and so I don't know it's going to fit in there. So I, I think that the, the message is it's not going to exceed that number whichever way we go. So with the exception of an increased tax rate.
We can't spend money we don't have.
Right. And, and, but I don't think, I don't know that that's going to be done, too. But anyway. All right, anybody else, public forum? Uh, now I'll close the public forum. And, um, after that discussion, I'm assuming nobody wants to do anything motion wise on the budget tonight. And we'll discuss a, a date, unless you want to do it now, John, about when you want to come together about re-meeting about that, uh, about that budget.
Only then on Friday.
No Fridays, okay. Um, and, and for other reasons that, that we'll talk much later about. Beth, do you think you could have that done by, say, Wednesday of next week?
I should be able to. And can I throw out, I've got two weeks of vacation that I've put in for. Um, so I will be out of state. I can attend by phone or video.
Which will be which weeks?
Uh, next, uh, next week and the week after.
Yep, and that week after I'm gone. So it really narrows down what we, what we can do here. But I mean, we could always push it out to the 27th or 28th if any, or 26th.
Um, we tentatively scheduled the 21st.
Yeah, but I can't, I'll be gone that week, so. Yeah, we already knew that date wasn't going to work. So, but I mean, we could, we'll, we'll do what, if you want to put it out to the 27th or 28th, just keep in mind that that's pushing it right to the edge. That leaves no time for arrows by, by the time. That leaves no time for arrows by, by the time we do the.
How long will it take you to get it together, Beth?
Do you want it this week?
Yes, sooner the better.
As long as it's not tomorrow.
Well, I mean, you know, there's nothing saying we couldn't have another meeting this week if you wanted to do that.
It's gonna be better if we can.
So maybe, maybe, because John said no Fridays.
Graduation is Friday, that's right.
Maybe, maybe we could do it Thursday. Yeah.
But, well, Beth, can you have it by Wednesday?
Uh, that should be doable.
So you want to do it Thursday, or you're saying do it Wednesday?
I, I would rather do it Wednesday, but if Thursday's better for everybody else, I can.
Wednesday or Thursday's good.
I can postpone what I'm gonna do.
Thursday, Thursday for you, Thursday, John, Thursday, Thursday, morning, afternoon?
Morning be fun.
Morning, nine o'clock. All right, so we'll call it for Thursday, June the eighth at nine o'clock. Um.
At the Morgan Center.
At the Morgan Center. We do not have to re-advertise that because we, we will be doing this as a recess, right? So we don't have to worry about the forty-eight hour notice. Okay, good enough. Anybody else? All right, moving right along to the, to former East Larnburg Town Hall, and it's got my name on it. Um, as Mr. Samuda spoke earlier about that, um, he, he's come to us looking at wishing to, um, lease that to begin with, um, and maybe add a reduced lease for the first few months or whatever until, uh, or year, uh, until we can get that up and running. Of course, we would have to structure a lease for that amount. Um, but there's also been a request that's in your pack from Partners in Ministry dated May sixteenth. Um, greetings from the Partners in Ministry located at twelve-third in East Larnburg. First, let me thank you for all you do for Scotland County. As you're aware, Partners in Ministry is running out of space to house our students. We are in need of additional room to provide services to our students who are non-readers and he, who need special assistance in a private setting. We also need space for our parents to meet. Partners in Ministry, we'd like to request access to the old East Larnburg Community Center between the hours of two PM and seven PM for five days a week and for special events if needed. In the fall of twenty-twenty-three or early September, we will start construct, construction of our new facility, and our need for space will not be an issue. We will clean the building, make sure it's safe for others to use when needed. If you have any other questions, feel free to contact me. So I read that, and then I also don't want to forget that we had a unsolicited offer to purchase that building from the union out at, uh, NSG.
Didn't we, didn't we bring up something about one of the posts, military posts possibly?
I think the American Legion and Joe was here. I don't think he's here now. I think they had, they were looking at, at possibly using that facility, too. So, um, and there's been some mention from the community. They want to continue to keep it for use for community use.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what, what, what is the, the offer that we received was not really comparable to.
The value, right.
Um, and I know that we've seen that the building has not been utilized much by the community, but I don't know that they really knew. I know we seen it, but I don't know that they really knew that it was even still available. I, I would really love for us to, to maintain that building as a community space, um, and those different agencies who have need for it. We figure out ways that they can build a schedule to allow them to use it, but it still be where the community, especially those citizens in that area, can utilize it when needed.
Right.
Are we, are we, are we talking about still imposing a lease?
I'm saying let the union use it when they need to use it, rent it out.
Well, they're the only ones using it now.
That the post rent it when they need to use it, let Mr. Samuda rent it, let Partners in Ministry rent it. I mean, I think the schedules can work when none of them are colliding.
Well, and then, don't forget, we also have that building, uh, the IEJ building, that something could be used for. I mean.
But I think this serves the need, it's just my thought, more sudden than IEJ. IEJ still has some things that have to happen. I mean, Mr. Samuda is, is ready now. Uh, uh, Partners in Ministry need space now. They won't need it after September. We have a building.
Well, they start September, so it might be another year after.
I know Reverend Richard Tyson also, and.
That's.
Because it's there. We're paying, we're, we're operating it now.
We're operating it now, yeah.
First of all, we have at least ten requests for that one building.
Are we using that for anything now?
Ten, at least ten.
Are we using it for anything now? For anything?
The only one using it's the union.
Besides the union, yeah.
And so, uh, we know the Sonic Lodge want to use it, we know the union want it, we know, uh, Partners in Ministry, yeah, Partners in Ministry, and a couple of others.
So.
May I address that?
Hold on.
Hold, hold on, hold on, kid. Go ahead.
So I'm just saying, we need to sit down and give it some thought. As you were saying, maybe we, we need to maintain the building and, and just schedule it because we want everybody to, we want to give everybody everything they want. But that, obviously, we can't do it. So we, we just need to schedule the building and, and, and in my opinion, take, we have ownership of, ownership of it, make it available. And, uh, I don't know who would be over it, but schedule it because certainly what presented to us tonight concerning our folk who substance abuse, they definitely need help. And, uh, we don't want to put one before the other, you know, say, your needs are greater than these folk need. We can't determine that. But we can schedule the building. So I think we should do as Commissioner Gibson said, maintain it and schedule. But folks fill out a scheduling. We won't make the decision as to who uses it first. They will, if they fill out the schedule.
And I think it's gonna, I, I agree with Commissioner Gibson. I, I think that's, we need to think about all the possible needs for it. I think it still needs to be used by the people in that community as, as best we can. I do think it's gonna be hard to do that because some of the folks, if we allow Partners in Ministry, that's gonna take such a large chunk out of the day, five days a week, it's gonna be hard for anybody else to use that.
During the day.
During the day. So I, I just think we need to, we need to, and I, I don't know what, uh, Mr. Samuda is.
Samuda.
Samuda is, what, 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 what his plan would be in regard to whether or not he could share that building. I don't know. I just, I think that's, I think if we could share it among as many people as possible, that would be great. I think it's gonna be hard to do that with the time demands that some are gonna want on that building.
Yeah, just put some money in.
So, so Mr. Samuda?
Yes.
So how many days a week? Would you use it every day?
I would use it every day from the hours of eight till two. After that, if someone else needs to use it for something else, I'm, I'm open to that. But my concern is, is the people of Scotland County, you know, this, this drug thing is, is getting more and more out of hand every day. Now, I understand that Partners in Ministry wants to use it for something else. And, and like you said, there are ten other people who are, who are concerned about ten?
But not about the same thing.
Right.
Everybody want to feel like what their service, what they're providing is number one.
Okay, I, I understand that. But I'm asking you, what do you think is more important? What do you think the building should be used for? The people of Scotland County need help with this problem of addiction that we have. That's not going away. That's not going away. And, yes.
You're only one. Do you need the whole building?
Well, I just need it, just one area. That, that, that back area, I can use that area from, from eight till two. But we're gonna be having, we're gonna be housing very important personal information on people, so it needs to be a locked area.
It's a standard long building.
Well, you, you, you could, you would have a, a, that office space in the back could be used for a lot, for the, for. Yes.
In a few, I mean, uh, for a year, we're gonna have space at the Johnson. We'll be able to meet some of these needs there. This one building is not gonna solve our problem. But everybody's lined up for this East Larnburg facility. They need to know that we are renovating thousands of square foot of usable space in the Johnson.
Mm-hmm.
Facility. And so we can't do it just at the snap of a finger, but we're working on it. And everybody has made a request for us. That's, that's legitimate. That comes under, under our domain as commissioners. We're providing space for that as we now speak.
Over at I Johnson?
Yeah, we're gonna have space over there, and as long as whatever folk want to do come within our guideline, we have space coming available. But this one facility in East Larnburg is not gonna work for everybody. Everybody can't use it, so I don't know.
I, I, I get what you, and, and I want, I asked Dorothy, I don't want to put you on the spot for Partners in Ministry. This letter says two to seven. I thought you had, I'm sorry. I know, I know that. I do know that. I do know that. But anyway.
While you're asking me something, uh, I can, I can ask you a question now, if you don't mind.
Hit me.
The opioid money that we have here in Scotland County, what is that being used for? Could that meet one of the needs that you have?
That, that, it, it could, but that, you know, with any funds we get from anybody, of course, this is a legal settlement, and we're gonna get another one, I think we've been advised about that we're gonna get. They come with strings. And you gotta, you gotta put it in the right place at the right time and be able to show this, and, and I'm not sure what that works for yet. I, I don't know. But it, 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 it could, it could. It very well could. Um, but in, and I think Mr. Samuda's in the spot of right now to finish getting licensed up and getting everything identified. He has to pinpoint a location and say, this is where I'm gonna be at. And, and, and go from there. But what I was getting to was is that this request of Partners in Ministry is to use it from two o'clock to seven o'clock, five days a week, Monday through Friday, in special events. But I'm just saying, maybe that could work. But, I mean, maybe we need to think a little bit on it till Thursday.
What, what does Reverend Tyson want to use it for? What days?
He, he wants to just have it there for when the community wants to use it.
Because they use it for birthday parties.
Uh, yeah, yeah. But I will say that nobody's rented that or even asked to use that building for the last, since the year we've had it, except for the union has had their meetings there, so.
So since, what, this year, um, we've had ten people who now want to use the building? I ask that you take into consideration the urgency that we have with the substance abuse and mental health issues. The needs of the many really outweigh the needs of the few. And East Point has now given me permission to provide these services.
Have you got your license yet?
I have licensed professionals waiting for me to get a building. I still have to run it by Department of Health Service regulations. I have the pictures. I just need to send it to them. Send an address. But I do have permission from East Point to provide SEACOT, uh, facility-based crisis and outpatient treatment. After ten years of waiting, they finally allowed me into the network. So I'm ready to go. I've been at this for ten years now, and finally, as I said earlier, I'm no longer on the menu. I'm at the table. And I'm asking you.
Most of you know East Point is our provider.
Yes.
Yeah, provided the one that we fund. Well, and unless somebody else has anything else, I'd say we, you know, give them time to everybody to chew on this until we meet again Thursday morning, and, um, and, and we will try to do something on that day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Tyson. I, I, I had, I know, I, I know, I know. But anyway. All right, so moving right along, uh, Commissioner Brazil will talk about the North Turnpike Water Project.
Commissioners, we have talked about this water system. We've talked about this water system up on North Turnpike. And, uh, I think we've, we made a motion to go forward with it. And with, this thing's been going on a long time, and with the current situation of, uh, well, current situation, uh, I took it upon myself to, to try to move forward with this, with this water system. So what I've done, what I've done is I've contacted the engineer that, that actually engineered in, engineered all the previous water systems we have in the county. And, uh, I intend to make a motion on this tonight. Before I do, I wanted to talk to y'all a little bit about it.
I'd go ahead.
Uh, I've asked Joe Langston, which is here, Joe, stand up, to come and talk with us about the water system. And you want to come up, Joe?
This is very hard to see, guys, but that's the proposed line.
That yellow.
I don't know if he can zoom it or not, but it, it, it's very tough to see. That's North Turnpike Road from, uh, Harold Morris Road up to.
Well, it goes, it's from, it's from Harold Morris Road. It goes south, uh, probably a thousand feet from Harold Morris. And then it goes north from Harold Morris all the way up to Horseshoe Road, which is on the right. It's approximately somewhere around four point, four point three miles, which is a little more than what we anticipated at first.
Commissioner Brazil, was this the area that covered those females?
It is. It is. This, this is actually the area that, that, uh, uh, that's been looked at so many times through the years and promised so many times through the years, and, you know, just, uh, we just couldn't make it happen. And, and I think we got a good, good opportunity to make it happen now. And, uh.
And the only difference in this map is to what we had, this is all North Turnpike there. Then what we had previously looked at, it was talked about coming off Deercroft Line and running it to here and then going. The problem with that is, is that Deercroft Line ends there now, and you see all that space there? That's gangland. So we're never gonna have, there's a couple miles there that we're never gonna have customer in that area. Now, if the addition to Deercroft comes up, what was it, about five hundred feet?
Yeah, about five hundred feet.
About five hundred feet. We could do that fairly easy. But instead of spending the money on this two miles of, of no possible customers, we're putting it into the whole turnpike, uh, area. So, and, and I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I want to thank y'all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Joe Langston. I work for HDR. I have about thirty years' experience in pipelines and pump stations. And Scotland County is sort of sentimental to me. In nineteen ninety-seven, I was fortunate to, to work on District One, wrapping it up, but I also designed District Two. So what, um, Bo was talking about, we have a twelve-inch water main that comes at the intersection of Janesaw and North Turnpike. You got some stub outs already there. One's an eight-inch line that goes up, that points toward the north part of North Turnpike. Then you have a twelve-inch, um, water main that points to the south, and that's what we're planning on tying into because the stub out's already there, ready to connect on to. What we need to look at right now, we're talking about using a six-inch diameter water main. Um, there's potential that we might need upsize it to eight inch. There is a high point on North Turnpike Road. The, um, water elevation of the tank right now is four seventy-five point five. The high point on that road is three fifty-four, so you're talking about fifty pounds of pressure. Um, once you get demands on there, it could go down a little bit more. You need thirty, but it should be sufficient to, um, to supply that homeowner with water. We're looking at sixty-two customers right now. If we go beyond that, that's when we need to start looking at a larger line. So that's what we're looking at right now.
And, and, uh, also what I've asked, too, as a, to Joe to design it, but also asked Jim Blackwell's company to come in and oversee it from start to finish, do the bidding, uh, take the bids, uh, overlook the construction, uh, to, to, uh, do the inspections. To manage the project and to get, and, and get the best price, the best job for the cheapest price.
Right, and as a consultant, I reported to Jim Blackwell twenty-seven years ago. Um, sorry to date you. But also I've done a thirty-five percent design already at night. So, um, I have laid out the route of the water main, put, um, valves, bi-hydrants where they need to be, and those are just really for testing of the water.
And those are just really for testing of the water main, it's not for fire protection and location of born jacks. So that is out there right now.
So that, you're talking about a drinking water line?
Yes, sir.
Not a fire protection?
Correct. That is correct.
And, and you, and, and I forgive me for maybe not remembering exactly what you said. You're, you're, you're talking about an eight inch?
Six inch. Six inch right now. A six inch water main.
Had more, we envisioned having a greater number of customers than what we're currently talking about. You would go to the eight inch?
That is correct. And not the whole way, portion of the way. That's what we need to look at, especially at the high point.
How much would, percentage wise, how much would that increase the cost?
We're looking at that right now. I hate to give you a, a number. Um, there are, um, procurement material issues right now for bins and valves and, um, fittings. Sometimes it could take six months to get those. Right now, it's getting better. Pipe is no problem. PVC pipe is the fittings, the ducted iron fittings, valves and bi-hydrons. It's taking some time. Um, that might, you know, decrease. It is decreasing right now, but that's, that's the issue out there.
I guess my question then would become, if we, if we engage Jim Blackwell, I have to remember calling Jim today. Uh, and, and Ms. Langston, that, um, we're asking them to come back with an estimate? Is that what we're doing?
Oh, no, I'm making a motion to move forward.
Well, without an estimate?
No, uh, I think, he's talking about, I think, moving forward about hiring.
Hiring him for the, for the project.
I guess the only discussion need to be made, we do need some discussion on what the fee's gonna be. You know, they're not working for free.
That's, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, yeah, that's what he's talking about. I got you now. You threw me off on the fee. I thought, what? I, I, I agree. I agree. I, and I think that's what he's talking about. So.
Yeah.
So you want to make a motion that we move forward with creating that?
We, we've already, we've already made the motion to move forward.
No, I'm talking about your, your motion tonight, you want us to move forward with developing the relationship between county and Mr. Blackwell's company.
That's correct.
And, and.
And, and.
HDR.
That's correct.
Specifically what, uh, they wanna do that?
Observe.
Well, I wanna second your motion. I don't wanna know what I'm saying.
Running the water line, running the water line up Turnpike Road.
Yes.
To supply those folks with water.
A portion of it's gonna be four inch, a portion will probably be eight inch.
Right now, it's just six inch. It's six inch right now. If, if we get more customers, that's what we're looking at. But right now, it's six inch the whole way.
Way. And you mentioned there's some feeling that there will be some difficulty.
Less nationwide right now for all construction projects. When you have water line projects, some of the, um, pieces are hard to get. Um, but that, the, that's getting better. It's a shortage, but that's getting better.
I, I, Corrie, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I think he's tonight saying that we, uh, contract with HDR to do the engineering under the supervision of Jim Blackwell's company as the project manager.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying. Okay.
But here's the part I think that Commissioner Williams is saying, we see numbers here from HDR, nineteen five five four portion. I, I don't think we've gotten a proposal as to what Mr. Blackwell's fee is gonna be, is what you're saying.
Yeah, we just need to know. He's not gonna work for free. He's not gonna deal with his head.
He not volunteering to oversee.
Oh, thank you.
I will have that on our next meeting. I will have all that on our next meeting. Yeah, I will have that on our next meeting, yeah.
I, I am wholeheartedly in favor of doing what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
I, I, but I would think that somewhere, after we employ both of them and they do some of the work that we're asking them to do, they're gonna come back and say, this is what we believe the total cost is gonna be. Is that, is that a fair?
That's fair statement.
So at some point in the future, whether it's a month from now or six months from now, you're gonna come back and say, this is what we can do it for. Let's go. Cause we've heard estimates of anywhere from doing it as low as a million dollars to doing, that cost nine million.
Correct, correct.
We need something that we can.
Absolutely.
Think our teeth.
Right.
And once they bring that back to us, we'll beat it out and, and decide that way, correct?
Right. Well, that, that would be part of their, that, that's, that's what they're be doing. They would be handling the bid costs.
They wouldn't come back to us.
Well, no, we'll, we'll, we'll make it, I mean, we'll vote on it, but they'll come back, us know what.
Then we'll, we'll give them the authority to go.
Right.
Issue the, you know, the, seek the bids.
Right.
Now, my only question, this is from my knowledge as a fairly new commissioner, and this is to you seasoned commissioners. In a, in a normal setting, when we're doing something like this, would we always contract this out to be supervised by an outside consultant? Or is this not something that maintenance or public, our departments are able to manage generally?
I would think it was something you could do either way. I think something this big, it would be much more appropriate to farm it out. That would be, that would be one, one, one commissioner's opinion.
I'm cool with it. I just didn't know if that's normal that.
Yeah, that's pretty normal contract. So we have his proposal, and, and I'm assuming this is estimated numbers, but for your services.
Yes.
Um, this is not the work. So then by Thursday, you're gonna be able to bring this, Mr. Blackwell's.
Right. I'll have that Thursday.
Is that good? Or, or he also may decide to do it for the goodness of his heart.
I'll have that on Thursday.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else got anything? You clear? Okay. We, we, we missed some, we lost some money.
Vote on it?
Well, we're, we're gonna do it Thursday once he gets the number for Jim. Uh, we're not gonna do it tonight. We're gonna carry that over till Thursday also. We're gonna have a boatload Thursday now. All right, discussion of the water project. Okay, next mic for IEJ, IEJ project update.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I was asked to come before you, just to kinda give you an update on the IEJ project. As it stands right now, we're ninety percent complete, uh, on Phase One gym renovation. We are looking to have the, uh, gym, uh, completely finished as soon as the bleachers get in and have everything, uh, on Phase One closed out by, uh, June twentieth. Uh, we're working with surveyor on doing a preliminary, uh, division between the two pieces of property. Uh, hopefully we'll have a preliminary for you to look at next week, uh, based on talking with John McLean. Uh, we'll need some guidance on Phase Two. Right now, the city is gonna allow us to open the gym without having any additional parking spaces in place. But it's dependent upon what happens with Phase Two, uh, there's gonna be the requirements. If it stays a, uh, uh, storage facility, there's no parking requirements. If it's developed for business, depending on the headcount, it will go up in there. Transfers are, uh, there's a company that's coming in and doing the reline of the shorelines. Uh, we're gonna have videos posted online once this project is completed, showing you the before and after of, uh, the new, uh, shoreline system that we're putting in. Basically, it's, uh, some areas are gonna be a recoating, uh, with an epoxy finish to make it a smooth finish. Others, they've installed liners where we had, uh, failed, uh, lines throughout the building. Uh, but it's gonna be on, uh, probably in the next week or two, so you can actually go and see before and after.
And I think that comes with like a fifty-year warranty, right?
It, that's correct. Uh, the, the new pipes will have a fifty-year warranty on them. Uh, and there's two different ways. One's in epoxy, which carries the fifty-year warranty. The other also is like a sleeve that you put in. It looks like almost a new piece of PVC pipe that's been installed inside of it. We did have several issues, uh, failed terracotta lines, rusted, uh, uh, cast iron, ducted iron pipes. So, uh, all that will be, all the main lines will be, uh, renovated. I entertain any questions?
Mrs. McGurk, at present, what is our plan for the area where the buildings were demolished out in front of the gym when you come out? What's the plans for that area?
That's gonna be proposed parking. Uh, we're looking, if, if anything proceeds as I was instructed a year or so ago, that's, it's gonna be an entirely new parking area out there. And if it changes, then we won't need that much parking. Currently, we're gonna need about seventy-seven spaces as is. Uh, we've got about fifty-four out there right now. Uh, if you change that and you start dividing it into offices, it's just gonna, it depends on what the plan.
Did we not have that particular area as a part of Phase One?
It was not. It was, uh, Phase One was gym renovation, just gym renovation.
Nothing to that area out front?
Uh, no, sir. And the reason being is because there wasn't a plan that I was aware of in, in place as to what the final product was gonna be.
So the, so the annex portion is that parking lot is sufficient for that building like it is, right? Cause there's a parking lot behind the annex.
That parking lot currently is the only parking other than the twelve spaces up front that, uh, is for that entire piece of property. Uh, instructions were to cut that parking lot out for the gym, eh, when we do the preliminary. And that's what you'll have to look at hopefully next week.
So we're gonna, we're gonna end up having to do, yeah, yeah.
So they're gonna cut that back parking lot out? No, out front, we're on top. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So you will, we will, if, if we let that parking lot go with those forty spaces for the annex, we will need to have.
We'll, we'll have to pave that other spot.
That's great.
Which I think we assumed that anyway. I did. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on, our boards and committee appointments. Uh, Vice Chair Gibson.
Yes, sir. Um, so we have quite a few. We have, uh, Tourism Development Authority Board has one appointment. Um, this particular person must be hospitality. Uh, and we're lucky to only have one, a person who's applied, and that is Mr. Jerry Riggins. Uh, our second appointment is Jury Commission. It also only has one appointment. We have two, um, persons who have, um, submitted applications. My recommendation is that we appoint Adam McGill. The Lumber River Aging Advisory Council has three appointments and four applications. I'm recommending that we appoint Carol Butler, Brenda Gilbert, and Betty Mitchell. We also have the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee and the Adult Care Home Community Committee. Those two, um, only have one application, and, and that's both Ms. Amanda John. And I'm recommending that we appoint her to both of those boards. So I have it up in front of you, highlighted those recommendations.
Second event, sir.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Uh, is, is it clear, Adam, on what you're doing? Who's got what? Okay. Anybody got any other discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right.
For the sake of the public, I do wanna just say this, that on our website, you will find, um, information about Library Advisory Board. Uh, the Board of Health has vacancy for veterinarian. Uh, the Lumber River Workforce Development Board, uh, the Zoning Board of Adjustments. And our DSS Board, um, also has a vacancy. It is not appointed by us. That particular seat is appointed by the DSS Board that's in place. But those are other vacancies that are out there for the public to, who wanna be, you know, joining, uh, communities.
All right, and we'll move on to the next item, but not off the topic of boards and committees. Um, there, the Southeastern Community Action Partnership has moved their board meeting dates and time which are time that conflicts with my board meeting with the Economic Development Corporation. So, uh, I have discussed it with several, I think, John, 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 this is the board John had to come off last year because he been on there too long. And, um, but he's also on the Economic Development Board. So they're, they're, the same day, the exact same time. So, um, I would like to make the motion to remove myself from that board and appoint Commissioner BJ Gibson to that board. All right. Any other discussion?
Is Mr. BJ Gibson?
You don't have the floor. No, I'm saying. He's already, we've talked about it. So, all right, all in favor of that? Uh, any opposed?
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll start with county commissioner news. Um, of. I'll just start with Bo.
I ain't got nothing.
That's hard to believe. Y'all make sure that's on tape. Bo, he ain't got nothing to say. Uh, Commissioner Gibson.
I only have that, there are quite a few Juneteenth events, uh, in the community, most of which I've made sure have been shared with us and just so that we can show our faces for some of those events that are coming up.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
Just wanna congratulate all of our pre-K, um, elementary school, fifth graders, middle schools who's going to the high school, our seniors at the high school and that Shaw and early college, and our college graduates this year. It's always good to see our young folks doing the right thing. I know in this world, all you see is the negativity and the bad. And we do have a bright young future of young folks in Scotland County who's doing the right thing. We need to celebrate them as well. I just wanna congratulate those families, those kids, and just continue to do the right thing and continue to, 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 to build as a, as an individual.
Mr. Alfred?
Just thank everyone who is here for being here and any of those who are tuning in, um, on, on the live feed. We just appreciate you being here. We're better when you're here.
Um, only one thing, and it's not something really for discussion or vote tonight, but just to kinda keep you up, we're, we're having some issues out at the Cascades Water Plant. And, um, uh, Mr. McGurk's on top of that of what's gotta be done. There's gonna be probably some minor fixes, but there also may be some major stuff coming up in the next year. Six, nine months that we may have to address. Keep that in the back of your mind, because we are, for lack of a better word, contracted with Cascades to keep that system up for their fire protection. So, um, just, it's kind of an FYI right now. So, all right, anybody else got anything you wanna talk about? All right, so with that, we will need to go into closed session, and I will not read all those reasons, but they're all printed on the agenda. Uh, and we will need, we will need us. Do you wanna add section, accent, section seven? No.
Okay.
No. Oh, it starts doing that now. Anyway, all right, wait, so we'll need a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Thank you all. And.
See you back there.